All right, I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just so everyone is aware, Commissioner Tendaro and Commissioner Young zooming in for tonight's meeting. Commissioner Kennedy, could you please welcome?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 13th, 2024 Callan Township Board of Commissioners meeting. And everybody out there in the world, and we're here to assure that we can make sure that the citizens of Callan Township are treated fairly, that their voices are heard. So if you have any ideas or visions or thoughts, please share them with us. Don't share them amongst yourself, share them with us so that we can resolve peacefully and make sure that we can make sure that our citizens are completely satisfied with what we can do to make Callan Township a beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right, next on the agenda is citizens to be heard here in the Township Building. Do I have any hands raised? Not at this time. Anyone in Zoom? All right, next on the agenda, we have our engineering. Spackman Davis Farmhouse roof bid. Do we have Ross online?
Ross unfortunately was unable to make the meeting this evening, but we do have Roman from Gilmore here to speak on behalf of the farmhouse roof replacement project. I know this project's been a long time in the works and excited to hear more about what needs to be done and next steps to make sure it's secure. Believe.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am doing just fine. I'm hopeful that we won't have the technical difficulties Ross described to me from last time. So if you have any trouble hearing me, just please feel free to say something and hopefully I can fix the problem.
I appreciate that, Roman.
Okay, so as you know, we've been working on this Spackman Davis farmhouse now for several months. And we finally have an issued for bid ready set of specifications and plans. Ross worked up the big bid documents for us and essentially we're going with the same repair that we had proposed initially. The only change is we came to the board, as you know, previously to get some direction on which type of roof should be the replacement roof. We presented three options at that time and the board selected the, because you like the barn so much, it selected the standing seam metal roof option, which we thought was great. The building will look fantastic with that type of roof system on it. Ross developed a schedule. I'm not sure if he gave that to you with a handout or electronically, but he has a bid schedule that he had prepared for you. Do you want me to go through that or are you comfortable with what he had provided you previously?
Commissioners, any questions on bid schedule?
No.
No, I think it was just fine. I think we're all more interested in the numbers and what the cost is going to look like.
The cost, I believe he shared the, I guess, the engineer's opinion of probable cost for the construction. It is a little higher, as you know, because we found some things that were, that needed to be addressed and were hidden initially. And we were able to get a deeper look at it, a better look at it, and we did a deeper dive as a result of that. So they're slightly higher with the items that we had presented in the preliminary, but there was items that needed to be added to ensure the integrity of not only the roof, but the farmhouse itself. The board did authorize, and Ross communicated to me that the board had authorized us to proceed with the porch evaluation. So the porch was, you know, a significant item and it adds a significant, fairly significant cost to the project, but we felt that we would treat it as an add alternate. You can do most, if not all of the roof project without touching the porch other than fastening the roof support structure for the porch to the building. So we feel that that's essential and has to be part of the base bid for the project. So we prepared a cost estimate for the base bid and two alternates. The base bid itself is fairly close to what we had originally calculated for the roof, other than one thing, and that is we went to several roof contractors in the area. And we were informed that it would be because of the amount of damage to the existing roof and the existing building, it would be prudent to replace the existing plank type roof sheathing with conventional plywood roof sheathing for several reasons. Most of them technical, but a couple of them practical. One, once you start replacing the roof planks that are there that are damaged, it only creeps. So you start replacing one area and the next area has to be replaced. And you start replacing that area and then you find some deterioration in another area. There were so many areas that we saw water staining in when we visited the building that we just felt it would, instead of doing it piecemeal, it would be a smart idea to just remove all of the plank which is there now and replace it with conventional roof sheathing. That added some cost to the base number of the roof itself, but it wasn't that significant. Again, the significant costs were related to anchoring the porch, some of the mobilization. We are going to have them do that as a result of removing the planks. You have to temporarily support the roof so there's some shoring and bracing that has to be done. And that all was calculated in the latest cost estimate.
Would you care to share with us the cost?
Do you have the write-up that Ross had provided?
It's on my iPad, dude.
Yes, I have the write-up. So setting aside the alternate number one, alternate number two, which would be the porch flooring and the porch foundations, the total cost to the roof is estimated at $307,360.
Correct, correct. And that number does include the replacement of the wood columns for the porch, which is part of the roof structure, and it does include replacing the railings. And as you know, the railings, there's a couple of sections that are still in good shape, very small amount though. But most of the railings are in pretty bad shape. So that figure does include those two items. We also decided to replace the sopits because the roof contractors, all three that we consulted with for this particular type of system, the standing seam metal roof system, said that once you take off those, you'll never get them back. You'll never be able to remove them and replace them because the systems are just that different from what's there now, which is a mixture of asphalt shingles, metal roof and cedar shake. So there's just no way you're going to match them. So you might as well remove all the sopits and remove the fascian trim and replace them and use, basically use materials that'll be there for the next, you know, 25, 30 years without any significant maintenance.
I did have one question, Don, since you have the figures there. The cost for the actual roof, I remember reading it was only about $140,000, $145,000.
Correct.
And the remainder of the $307,000 is more structural and everything else that you just finished explaining. So there's a lot more work that needs to be done. Our roof for the barn was about $120,000, if I recall. So that kind of puts it in perspective of, you know, I believe it's an accurate figure of what we're looking for. But it's just, it definitely needs a lot more work.
The $148,000 is very close, Commissioner, to the number that we originally calculated. It's very, very close. We did a pretty good job in the preliminary phase of, again, interviewing contractors. Obviously, we didn't have a lot of detail at that point, but they were contractors that were very experienced in metal roofs. And we interviewed also contractors that were very experienced with cedar shake roofs and asphalt shingle roofs. Some of the ones that do one versus the other won't touch another system. So we were very careful to call in for reference purposes contractors that were considered to be experts at cedar shake for the cedar shake estimates, metal, standing seam metal for the metal roof estimates and asphalt shingles for the asphalt shingles. So yes, and thank you very much for referring to that because it is very close. The figure is very close to what we started with in the preliminary.
Okay. And with the additional work for the porch itself, can we outline that as well?
Sure.
Additional work comes out to $66,200. With tax and a contingency of 5%, total cost would be just over $392,000. And that is if, based on this estimate.
That is shoring up the base of the porch?
Yes, that's correct. The shoring up the base of the porch, replacing all the columns, replacing all the flooring, also replacing the flooring support structure with a new joist system. That, all of that was rolled into that estimate of $66,200. And the base bid with the alternates is $373,560 is what we came up with for the estimate. And then a 5% contingency for, again, unknowns. Whenever you do a rehab repair project, you don't know what's going to happen. So you always put in at least a 5% contingency, which we recommended in this case, which added another $18,678,000. And it is just north of $390,000, $392,238 is the actual engineer's estimate.
All right, let me open it up for questions. Commissioners, have any questions you brought up?
Taking a lot more. Taking into consideration everything that could possibly go wrong and having the price at $392, my next question would be, or is there any kind of plus minus odds that we're not going to hit as many problems and that it could actually be a little less? Is there any possibility of that?
Yes, absolutely. There's always a possibility that it could be less than the estimate. We've seen prices for lumber recently a lot higher than they were even six months ago. We've seen for some of the fasteners that we had specified, which again are part of the roof support structure and also the porch and the porch support structure increased significantly over the last six months. So we tried to cover those costs as best we could with our estimates and we tried not to put that into contingency. So yes, to answer your question directly, yes, there's a possibility that we would see some less damage. I would say the place where I'm most concerned is when they pull off the existing roof and the planks were, again, saturated. So we're replacing all those and that takes a big if out of the equation. So we're replacing all of the planks for, in favor of roof sheathing, plywood roof sheathing. And in this case, because we're doing that and because we're sister ribbing, what we call sister ribbing, which is adding additional rafters, I don't foresee that there's going to be much more or possibly it could even be less damage. Or instead of replacing entirely a rafter, we might be able to, what they call sister rib it and put a rafter right next to it, which is always a lot easier to do than to take an entire rafter out and then put a new one back in. So yes, there's our opportunity for some cost savings if that happens. Obviously, we won't know until we get into the job and how aggressively the contractors decide to bid the project.
I have one more question and that's for... When we were looking at a price of $140,000, I was figuring probably around $220,000. Even at that, we knew we had money and open space for that. This kind of a price tag, is that blowing the open, we don't have open space to cover this or?
Well, when this came through, obviously it was hired and we discussed the previous meetings. So Finance Director and I sat down and went through the Open Space Fund. The Open Space Fund, as the commissioners are aware and as you discussed in prior meetings, it's largely fee in lieu of, developer comes forward and under the ordinance is required to have a certain amount of open space. They are able to provide a fee in lieu of, if that's not feasible based on the development. So we went back through, and I want to thank Lisa for putting this together, did a wonderful job as always.
As always.
Going back through developments to 2016 and identifying how much each project provided to the Open Space Fund. We have about 1.1 and change million in the Open Space Fund from those development fee in lieu of. So we do have sufficient revenue to cover the expense. Some of those funds are allocated to projects that, most notably, and one I believe many are excited about is the trail project.
Oh, yes.
So we would have to look at that project specifically. There's a number of breakdowns over the phase of that project. And we are going after grant funds in order to support some of the construction. A lot of the engineering was covered and design work was covered through the open space because it's more difficult to get, to receive grant revenue for design and engineering. In that discussion, one item that was raised is we have $180,000 dedicated towards sidewalks. And that, you know, is a sufficient amount associated with that fund. But to answer your question in short, yes, there is funds available. We would have to look at the estimated budgeted expense for the remaining amount of those funds in order to complete the other projects that I know the township would like to see move forward.
Don, just so everyone's clear, this is just to put this out the bid and not, this isn't us voting to spend that money at this point. We can always say no if the bids come in too high. The other thing is the roof, the barn roof note, I think expires this year. We'll pay off that note. We could always take another note and float that for a period of time as well.
Good point, Josh. Okay, any comments?
I just wanted to ask a question, like with the Open Space Funds, do we get like contributions into that, like as we get development comes in? So is that always refurbished, even if we were to tap into it? Are we getting monies all the time?
In theory, as development or other projects move forward, this is an option available that additional funding certainly, I do not see this fund being closed out anytime soon.
All right, Lorraine, Commissioner Tendaro, any comments?
No comments at this time.
All right, thanks, Lorraine. I'll reach out to the public here in the Township Building. Any comments? We have a couple of hands raised?
Hi, everyone. Alicia Creany, 103 Arrowwood Drive. I just, I want to point out because I'm not sure that it's always 100% clear to everyone that the Spackman, can you hear me? Spackman, Spackman Davis Farm is a township-owned asset. And to me, it's our obligation to take care of it, to maintain it, to turn it into something that's going to create revenue. And I only say that because I think at times people may look at it like, well, what is this farm that we're trying to invest in? This is owned by the township and I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to take care of it, to nurture it and turn it into something special. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. That's a very good point. It, you know, it's under our watch and we need to maintain the history of Callan Township. Tony, come on up. I'm in a dress.
This area 251 Loomis. When they started this with the barn, first words out of my mouth was going to be a money pit. Second word was no. Now alls I see is money pit, roofs, sidewalk, blacktop driveway, better than the boulevard. Driveway is better than a boulevard now. But we keep spending money on a farm. Like you said, we own it. We can tear it down.
I don't think that's going to be an option.
And it's also in the purchase agreement. That's not, it was sold to us at a good price with the promise that we would maintain it. And for decades, it was not maintained. Now, had it been maintained, we wouldn't be looking at these massive costs right now because it would have been a little here, a little there. You know, this is where we are.
I understand.
And there's people trying to raise money to help this township with it. On other sides, I mean, there's a lot of things going on and a lot of volunteers putting a lot of sweat equity up there too. So you've invested in this, millions already. So either we invest a little more right now or you've lost your whole investment.
Does it really help the public?
Yes, it does.
Does that, what, help?
Think. I know you can think.
Okay. Come on. Thank you very much, Tom.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any comments in Zoom? All right, once again, we have another hand raised?
Sure.
Oh, Cheryl, come on up.
My only question.
Hey, Cheryl.
Hi. My question is, I understand what you're doing with the roof, that's fine, but how is the interior at this point? How are the beams, ceilings, the floors, basement beams? Where do we stand with that?
The condition of it. I know the first floor, the floorboards in the one room are kind of buckled.
Yeah, I can speak to this fully. Paul Stevens did a full, and I'm sure Don could too. Paul Stevens has done a full, and your husband did a full, your late husband, who was a great man, did a full evaluation of additions there. And while the floors are buckled on the first floor, that is from humidity and from the pipe bursting upstairs. Once the roof is on and we have the dehumidifiers running constantly, all we have to do is lift the floor up and set it right back into place. It goes right back in.
It's actually in pretty good shape overall.
The reason I asked was because...
Oh, right, yes. Right down to the feather lines from where ceiling and some of the walls were painted with feathers in the 18th century, that's still there. It's, I was surprised.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other questions, comments? All right, just as Commissioner Young's, yes, we have another one? There's Donna.
Yeah, Donna DePrincio, 211 Garden View Drive. I would like to also echo, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, great. I want to also echo that Spackman Davis Farm should be nurtured. It's a gem for our township. It's historic. It needs to be preserved. And I'm all for putting money towards it and I think it should be a priority. And I think it is definitely something that all, you know, people should be able to enjoy. And I look forward to, you know, the future of Spackman Davis Farm. So thank you, Commissioners. Keep up the hard work.
Thank you, Donna.
And I just wanted to, Tony, I'm sorry, I always get a little short with you. The only thing, I never thought that you and our former Township manager had anything in common, but you can both get under my skin. I appreciate your thoughts. I really do. I really do. And you're a great contributor to this township.
And we have one more hand raised there. Chris, why not? Love the input.
Chris Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue.
Hey, Chris.
Hey. I would like to also go along with the sentiment of trying to maintain and keep going with the Spackman Farm. As to the question of the floors, I have to say that's one thing I commented on. Two of the rooms are absolutely gorgeous. They call them king planks because they're so wide and they're absolutely gorgeous. Unfortunately, when you first go into the main room, yes, they have buckled and it's definitely humidity and it has gotten worse since last year. But again, that's something to be fixed. I guess one of my questions had to do with the roof and we're talking about the metal roof. And I'm only asking because I just don't know. The cedar shake, would they be cheaper and is that even a consideration? I know it's been discussed, I just don't recall.
Yeah, it was more expensive for the cedar.
It's more expensive.
And also a shorter lifespan. So we took that into consideration as well.
Okay, I just couldn't remember.
There was, you know, from one of the Jeffries Brothers, Jeffries Brothers, who had actually worked there at one time, that said, you know, when it was built, cedar shake was great, but the cedar trees were like this. But the cedars now, they're not mature. So a cedar shake roof is not, it's not going to last. It's not, it's not worth the use.
I just, I just couldn't remember. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. No other comments?
I'll throw in one other thing.
Sure.
You know, it's a lot of money, but that's what this fund is for. Every time that we have said to a developer, all right, all right, you don't have to give us the open space, but give us the money. You know, that's what it's for. And it's for, it's almost like a rainy day fund like this. So would I ask for a tax increase to do this? No. Would I ask to cut another program to do this? No. But we do have the money and open space. Now I'll shut up.
And as Commissioner Young had pointed out, several things here. One, the barn roof, I'm almost sure we have one more year left on that payment, but we were using the funds from the farmer, the money received from the farmer to pay for that loan, which case we would just continue using that for whatever, if we need to take out another loan on top of any open funds can use. So either way, we can figure out how to cover the cost. We can only hope that the bids are going to come in a little bit lower. And it is separated out. So right now at $307,000, that is just the roof and some other structural work. And the other $66,000 is the front porch, which may need to be done at another time, depends on our funding at times. But to put it out the bid, that's all we're asking to do at this point. As Commissioner Young stated, we can turn it down if they all come in a little bit higher. If they come in a little bit lower, we're all going to be thankful. But this is a project that the three commissioners here, when we first ran for office in 2020, this was one of our priorities, take care of this farm, okay, the whole parcel.
It's Alicia again, everybody. This may help people like Tony. If we talk about this and not just in terms of restoration, but one day hopefully turning this into a revenue income stream for the township, does that help someone concerned about these costs? Because if you look at similar farms in other municipalities that are run and they use these preserved areas as different entertainment venues, et cetera, they actually bring income in. So I don't know if that helps someone like Tony to understand that the long-term goal, I would hope, is to turn it into something where we can bring revenue into the township as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with all that said, I will entertain a motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates to move. To move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Hey, that's 5-0 vote. You go. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Tony, thank you. You know, and you know, just so, just so we understand, Tony is just looking out for, hey, this is my tax dollar. How is it being used? And I understand that. So there's nothing wrong with, you know, either side to make the comment. So, but that's what we're here for.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate everybody's input. Of course, we use that to gauge, you know, the interest in the project and thank you very much. I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ronan. Next on the agenda, uh, four minutes, uh, the May ninth. Meetings ago, uh, any corrections needed? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
They'll move.
They moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, minutes have been approved, five zero. Motion to approve the May thirtieth. Four minutes.
I have. Yeah, I have, I have questions about May thirtieth. I know that we make an effort to try to streamline, to leave capture things that are considered to be of utmost importance, but there's, there's just some stuff missing here that, you know, there was, there was a a fairly contentious vote taken and there was some discussion on it. It's just missing completely. And I don't think it really captures the spirit of what was being said, that people who voted on record for their reasons, it should be in there. You know, I know that, uh.
All right, well, we can table the minutes.
Yeah, there's that. And and one of the, you know, there were, there were three uh public comments and only one is in here. Mr. Parr is public comments not in there at all. I I know that they were, they might have been unflattering, but I thought they were respectful. I think that they should be in there. Well, I'll I'll send these around to everybody, my notes and sort of where we go from there.
Okay. All right. Do we need to make a motion to table or just make the statement that we were, we will table the minutes?
Table on them, fine, unless the motion is questioned.
As a motion?
Sure.
All right, entertain a motion to table. So move, so move. Moved and second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I do recall Mr. Parr um was in the statement at the last meeting towards the end of the meeting, I believe.
Okay. Good. Hey, next we have the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve for the sprinkler system at the golf course. And Don, you want to take this?
Of course. And uh, so this, this is positive news. Um, the uh, as many may recall from the uh, the golf course, uh, the the director of the golf course reporting that the irrigation system was faulty, um, outdated and in need of repair. Um, happy to report that that's since been completed. Uh, it's working well. Yeah, very excited that uh able to come in in the morning, having watered the greens uh over the evening and get right to work, making sure it's ready for today. Um, of course, the the system i- is fantastic and it's welcome improvement to the to the course. And it's kind of a lasting impact. It's also, there's costs associated with that, unfortunately. Uh, the the resolution here is enter into a lease agreement in order to pay for the new system over a period of, I believe, four years. I think the final payment is in May of twenty twenty-eight. Um, total cost is fifty-three, two, five, eight, three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight and with uh payments of uh around uh three thousand seven hundred and ninety-four uh over the course of uh the quarterly payments, I believe. Yes, quarterly payments. Um, this, this is a drastic improvement. It's it's one that can be automated. It's one that can be controlled if uh a certain area of the course is getting direct uh uh exposure that's causing, it can be modified in order to accommodate. So certain areas not getting too much water and the areas that need the water the most are receiving it. Um, that's gonna help on a number of fronts, including sustainability of of not overwatering and also maintaining a a good course. So um, the the resolution before you would be to enter into this lease agreement to to pay off the infrastructure that's been installed at the golf course.
But if I recall, Nicole had uh spoken about this, stating that she has an app on her phone that she can actually run it?
I believe so. It's it's highly technical. It's it's what most courses are using nowadays. They're not out there with garden hoses. Um, which in some ways is what was being done. Um, and uh it's gonna have a drastic improvement. Um, and we're already hearing positive feedback from the members of the of the golf club uh saying the work that Nicole has done uh there in the course of her her tenure with the township is extraordinary. Uh, this will just take it to the next level.
I wouldn't be surprised to find out Nicole has an app on her phone to solve every problem in the world. She's pretty amazing.
All I know is she lit up when she was talking.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, no.
And now, excuse me, on here it says lease up, but we're actually purchasing these items. So it's a lease purchase, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because the way it reads is like we're renting it or something, but we actually are purchasing these items.
It's a payment plan, but they're not, they're not gonna really comment, take it back at the end of the lease. This will be our our infrastructure. Good point.
Commissioners, any other questions on this item?
Yeah, I have one question. So what what exactly, are we replacing just sprinkler heads or is this the actual pipes or what what is this? I'm sorry, I I just don't, I didn't understand from the the documents in the packet.
It's so it's a, it's a combination of of items. It it is the sprinkler heads. They're they're uh those, the heads that were in place were uh failing is the best way to put it. They uh uh we're not functioning properly. So those were replaced. Their worst, uh, the piping that to run the the water through, uh, there there was a lot of work done on that as well because there were leaks that that were not accounted for. Um, and to put in some new, new infrastructure there. It's also a uh monitor, I I tech automized system, so to speak, uh, computerized, so that they can set timing, amounts, things of that sort and be uh controlled remotely. And that's being done from the maintenance barn. Uh, so it's a number of factors that that goes into it to ensure that it's uh uh each area of the course is receiving the proper amount of wa- water.
Okay.
And can I ask another question? Not in the golf fund. We we don't have enough money to purchase this and instead of going into like a lease where we're gonna be paying so much interest on this over the course of time.
I'll defer to the finance director to speak about the specifics of that question.
I just don't know why we would lease it if we were in a position to to buy it.
This was the, I think, the easiest and the quickest way to um get this done in um save time, save personnel. Um, you know, we were paying somebody to come in and go around their entire shift every day.
Understand.
Lifting up the sprinkler heads to a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty sprinklers. Um, we wanted to try to save uh capital money, which is why we took the lease out. We did go out to bid. Um, uh, we got three banks. And uh this particular bank came in the lowest, and that's kind of why we chose that.
I was just wondering why we were leasing it, not purchasing it, if we had the funds, something.
Yeah, it it was just the better choice um rather than.
Instead of the upfront cost.
Spending a big chunk when we know that there's, there's other things that we could use uh for the next two, three years, uh, that money better spent.
Have a silly question. The, and six point three for right now is not a bad, not a bad.
Six point three percent.
We are, but you know, say uh this is broken into sixteen payments. Say uh.
Seven thousand dollars.
The year closes out really good. Can, oh, can we hit a, put a a heavy hit on the principal payment to save some interest later?
We can.
Okay. There's no prepayment.
I I think if you take a look at, uh, and I'll send it out tomorrow to the board, uh, the three to five-year plan of all of the other capital items.
Yeah.
Um, we might, we, there's, uh, there's always that option to do that. Um, I think with the all, all of the other capital items.
Oh, yeah.
We may just want to stay contracted this, just to have that money freed up.
I couldn't agree more.
All right, uh, residents here in the township building, any questions? No hands raised at this moment. Any in Zoom? All right, entertain a motion to approve the lease of the controller sprinkler installation for the Ingleside Golf Club in the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So move.
I'm in a second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I get one from Lorraine?
Yeah.
Oh, she did. Okay. All right, motion passes, five. Township manager, what do we have?
All right. Good evening, commissioners. That, uh, thank you. And we have a couple of uh discussion points this evening. Uh, largely policies that were brought to uh staff and the administration's attention that looked into um and are open to consideration far as how best to move forward. First, uh, is regarding right to know requests, specifically anonymous right to know requests. Uh, there was a bit of, and I can, of course, defer to our right to know officer, uh, if any, if I miss anything, but uh, the Office of Open Records had started to receive right to know uh requests essentially from anonymous participants. Uh, some of it is individuals not wanting to provide their information. Others are more automated, AI, for example, being able to send out multiple requests to a large number of municipalities mostly and trying to track down real estate information that then they would sell uh those lists to different companies. Um, municipalities, obviously, there's quite a bit of expense from a staff time and research time, putting these right to knows together. And when you're getting quite a few of these from from nobody listed, uh, they appealed to Office of Open Records to not complete these. Initially, the Office of Open Records said that municipalities would not need to complete anonymous right to know requests. They've since modified their approach and said, you should do it unless you have a policy locally saying that you do not need to do it. So the discussion topic for today would be, would you care to uh for us to put together such a policy? And PSATs does have a sample policy uh that they're recommending municipalities adopt to avoid the the staff time and cost associated with completing these requests. Obviously, if we get any requests from residents or anyone that lists their name and address and, you know, we we complete those in a timely manner. We take them very, very seriously. Excuse me.
Ooh.
I'm not here.
Um, however, it's the anonymous uh requests that do, and and as technology improves, there's a concern um that it could become easy, easier and cheaper for companies to try to use this as a funding stream and splash them out to every municipality in the nation with a click of a button. Abby, care to?
So I think he summed it up well.
That was good.
And so far, we've only gotten one that I know was anonymous. By one, I mean five, and they were pretty time consuming. Uh, but they came all in an instant from the same not real person. And I think that must, the police also got the same five that same day. Um, so they must just have a a list of all the right to know officers and boom, boom, boom. Yeah, it's a pain.
This started, I think, a couple of years ago with, it's almost like spamming voter registration offices to try to slow down the process and and cause a lot of confusion. And I don't like it. It's, I, you shouldn't have to go through. I mean, a legitimate request is a legitimate request, but this bot nonsense and right to nobody and all, no, no, no. You know where I stand.
I think these aren't just requests for one single item, if I understand. These are requests for, say, all the projects going on in our township at one shot.
Yes. They're extensive.
Okay.
And it's not just my time. I usually can't answer them on my own. I am involving everybody else as well. So uh, we, actually, I kind of enjoy doing it for residents when they pose a question, uh, but these are.
They're making you do your homework.
Yeah, and you know that they're just selling the information.
Yeah.
So it's frustrating.
Taking advantage of a good program.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
Commissioners, any other comments on this? Reach out to residents, questions, comments? Tony, come on up. Yes.
You have a right to know, Tony.
Right to know.
Just name and address real quick.
I won't say nothing about that.
Name and address.
Uh, the right to know, like you have the pre-meeting before the this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, the legal stuff, everything legal. Everybody should know what legal, everybody in the township should know that information, shouldn't they?
You're referring to executive session? You're referring to executive session?
Yes.
So certain matters that, for example, are legal nature could, if discussed publicly prior and not within the privacy of the the solicitor, uh, could result in costly lawsuits or things of that sort. So municipalities and public entities for those matters that could be um, if it brought forward onto the public front before the legal information, the attorney-client privilege, that's sort of information. Um, that is protected and to a degree, try to minimize that whenever possible. Executive sessions are meant just to spend on topics of that nature. They're required to be spent on topics of that nature. Um, but that is not subject to right to know.
Thank you, Tony. Other comments here in the township?
I just have one comment real quick.
Oh, yes.
Um, so uh, residents know if they don't want to put their name on it uh in the past, they can email any of the board members and we can ask the question for you. Um, you know, I I don't foresee that residents would be affected by this. It's just big corporations or bots that would be affected and actually would help Abby do her job better.
Good point.
Yeah, and we don't, um, part of the law is that we can't really ask why someone is requesting the information. So um, even, even if they do put their name on there, we we just, we just send them what they're asked for and that's the end of it. So.
Okay. All right, any other questions from uh Zoom? Oh, yes, Cheryl. Oh, come on up to the mic. I'm sorry.
Good to see you, Cheryl. It really is.
You're all spalling. I was only gonna say, Josh, I don't actually, first off, I it's only gonna get monumental.
Yeah.
It's time, it's by. But I don't actually agree with you, Josh. I think let's put in any. If you want to put one in, put your name on it. And that should stand by residents, pretty much, who puts one in.
I couldn't really hear you, Cheryl. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. What I said, Josh, was I'm not as comfortable as you are with someone calling you and asking a question. And you taking care of it as opposed to resident not wanting to know. If it's a right to know, ours, put your name online. Don't, don't put it. I thi- I think that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
I I've had neighbors who've are re, uh, who are scared of retaliation from their neighbor when they ask for some, some type of information. So you know, that that's the only time that I've ever been asked to uh look into something for someone is just the fear of retribution from their neighbors.
There's also a difference between asking into some and putting to, asking you to take the place of, oh, it and anyway, I think except for residents or, or don't put it in.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Sounds you, you you got some good input on here. So if you want to try to draft something up?
We will modify the uh, the PSATs, resolution, the policy that is recommended. And uh, if the, if the board would uh, would like, we can have it on the next meeting's agenda. Excellent.
Good.
Thank you. Now.
Yeah, the hybrid meeting policy. This, this is exciting after last meeting.
Yes. So for those who were able to either be here or attempting to remote into the last meeting, we had some technical difficulties after a significant number of hours uh with our provider for the, the A B system. It's been, knock on wood, fixed. Uh, however, can't guarantee it's always gonna remain that way. And uh, in speaking with with members of the board and internal conversations with staff, wanted to possibly put forward a policy that defines what to do in the case of those technical difficulties. There were questions about if the system, if if the internet happens to go down, there's a power outage and the generator comes on here, but we do not have access to internet. Um, what to do if there's a a time sensitive vote, if we're up against. If we're up against a deadline for uh a certain project, uh a grant resolution, something along those lines. Uh the the concern was that do we need to cancel the meeting in those situations? Uh after some research and and passed uh, you know. Putting together past policies for hybrid meetings, um we do have a degree of flexibility, especially if we establish a physical location with a forum. Of the board, it's publicly advertised, it's open and available to the public. We can continue the meetings offering hybrid um as a. Available option to the public. Um, but we would not have to stop the the meeting outright if there there's a failure in the. In in the system. And and at the last meeting, I think there were some workarounds uh that were implemented in order to ensure those that were not here physically were able to. Provide some comment. And we we can elaborate more on some of those opportunities. Um, but really, the request. Question to the board would be, would you like to develop and draft up a hybrid policy uh to discuss and then possibly implement at a future meeting?
Well, I can't hurt anything. That's something, yeah, I think that would be great. Cause that way at least we would have something established in the event that we had interference is. People can't come back and say, well, what happened? Why did it happen? What are we supposed to do? We will have all those questions addressed beforehand.
I I've thought for a long time that we should, we need to have something in there about hybrid meetings, especially, and this is my pet peeve is. You know, Zoom is great, attend by Zoom, but if you want to be recognized in the meeting by everyone else who we can all see. Get turn your camera on. Wait, we know, know who you are. We know you're really there. Things like that, just little things that no one had thought of before. I I think that the uh sample is, it's into some things that I'm not at all.
Oh, no. There's, there was a lot in there. Really doesn't.
But um I I'm all in favor of this and moving forward this ASAP.
Yeah, Josh, Lorraine, comments?
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Lorraine. Josh?
Yeah, I I agree with Jane. You know, we need some policy so that we know what to do in the event of uh, you know, power outage, internet down. You know, we we still have the obligation to run the township, so, you know, we need a, we need a clear policy on how we move forward in case that happens.
In my comment about last meeting, um it it was a little different, only because we had folks on Zoom that wanted to make a comment. Now, majority of the stuff we were talking about was just going through the motions, but uh the one item talking about Bonsville apartment. I know some of the folks did want to chime in on that. My concern is their comments might influence us in our decision. So that we do need a policy to figure out, you know, I know the chat was down. I don't know if that's going to be an option that we can communicate in in that scenario. But the other scenario is, I remember years ago, the the electric went out on the east side of our town.
Yeah.
We actually canceled that meeting. Yeah, so so I I don't, I don't know how specific we can get with this or just a generalization and then call it by each situation. But uh guidelines would be helpful.
Take over some items we might have to vote on or, you know.
Yeah, certain items we might not be able to vote on, as as Don had mentioned, some items are time sensitive and we may need to uh make that vote, so. A lot needs to go into the discussion.
It's a little bit like, we're we're building the airplane while flying, so, you know, we're we're trying to figure this out as we do it. But, you know, there are, there are times where if we don't approve the um land development, either a denial or an acceptance. They get a deemed approval. So, you know, there are things that we have to vote on in certain amount of time. So we we do need a policy that, you know, even though we want the input of residents, you know, we, the worst case scenario would be we don't vote and then it's a deemed approval and we all get stuck with it.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
A lot of variables.
And I'll try to strike that balance. We'll try to put together a policy that takes into account specifics while speaking generally. While also giving the board flexibility to make uh determinations on a case by case. And I think that. Uh just like uh examples provided here, there's probably dozens, if not hundreds, of other examples of situations uh that could come up. And we could put together a a war and peace style length uh policy on this. And as soon as it's implemented, something we hadn't thought of would would undoubtedly occur. Um, so we'll um, looking at other municipalities, cities, we're not the first to go through putting together a hybrid policy, although the technology is relatively. New. Um but I'll, we'll put together something for the board to consider at a future meeting and then hopefully at some point uh get in place.
I want to see that war and peace volume.
You said you'd you'd try to strike a balance. Um, from what I've seen of you so far, and you're too young to rec, to know what this means, but I think you're already the great Wilenda. So, Tom, I think you know who he is. Who knows who the great Wilenda is?
I think he lost me, too.
He used to walk across a wire. No, he did at a veteran stadium a number of times across the entire. I think he, he might have done the ten towers, too.
Set up a tight rope at some point. Give it a try.
Great balance.
Well, since since the residents are affected by this, would love to hear some comments. Adam, come on up. Adam said improve the sound system. Any other comments here? Did we cover? I I I kinda. I repeated it. Just just pass it around. Interesting. Uh any in Zoom world? All right, Don, good discussion.
All right, I'll get started on putting that together and look forward to feedback from the board and the community. Uh, next topic for for discussion, this is one that I think my first day here was directed and hopefully going to be moving this forward is the uh. Uh, streetlight improvements, specifically holiday decorations. I know it's it's June and we're heading into a heat wave. Um, but it will be uh potentially snowing once again before we know it. Um, we've been in multiple conversations with the provider that installed the uh decorative lighting in Thorndale Village. Uh as discussed, there were not electrical outlets uh installed in that design at the time. Uh but we found, if we're working with him and his vendors, a relatively simple workaround to provide that. Uh in a timely manner. So we should be able to, and I fully expect to, have that ability to to have decorative lighting up uh for the holidays. Uh which brings us to the very important topic of what type of decorations would the board like to see? And we have several examples here. Um, I want to thank Abby for for putting this presentation together.
You, Abby. Right, looks beautiful, yeah.
Uh, a lot of options and and there's, there's obviously varying costs associated with each. Um, so really just want to get a feel for for what the. Board would be interested in, and we can go out and start getting some possible quotes um to see what the best uh best deal would be.
Yeah, before I ask the commissioners, I want to ask the residents who are going to be driving through our township, what would you like to see?
No. Seeing lights and.
One, one no vote for candy cane.
Hello?
Yes.
Thank you for asking for input. These are wonderful ideas. One of the things they do in Malvern, just as an example, is they get each small business to donate a lighted tree. And then the the business's name is actually on the tree as a sponsor for that particular lamppost, just a thought. Um, that's a way to engage the businesses in the process. I think this is a great improvement. Could someone explain exactly where? The um the lampposts are going to be from what point to what point in the township?
So the decorative lighting, um where these would be for the first year, and we'd love to expand in the future. But for the first year would be in Thorndale Village area, specifically between uh Bonsville Road and uh Municipal Drive. So that section right there, those are uh the lights that are are operated by the township. Uh we have the ability to put up the improvements to them. Now, we we do plan on engaging with other partners, as you mentioned, that may have. Um, lighting units on their their property and and seeing if they'd like to participate. And I think we want to, the goal would be to have a a nice proof of concept essentially. To have the the first year be something we're able to do. Um, and also, these, these, the the lights are not um inexpensive. Uh but for the, for the first year would be in that stretch right there.
Okay, so I'm thinking of the the newer businesses like the campus who we had put lights in. Will farmhouse have lampposts?
The wrong end.
I I know it's not part of what Don has suggested, but it over time, would we have one continuous stretch of this?
Yeah, the farmhouse was not asked to put streetlights up. In fact, they suggested that since they're going to have lights on their building, that they do not need to do streetlights.
Okay, but the campus has lampposts, I believe that we did ask as a design.
Decorated.
Did a great job.
So you wouldn't ask them to 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 offer this as a consistent thing in the township? Just just curious, it's no big deal, but.
I I think we're concentrating on our street lamps right in the beginning.
Okay, the ones that the township already owns.
Exactly. And and then we can reach out to the businesses and there, which is an excellent idea.
Just a a note on that, you know, the campus went all in on that and they did a beautiful job. And a week later.
What else caught the spirit?
A S C.
So they caught the spirit.
Did the same thing, because they were competing with, you know, it's.
But if they show consistency, yeah.
Everyone else who's got the microphone.
Cheryl.
Okay.
Keeping it. My question was, aren't the light posts at Lloyd Avenue coming this way? Their news. They're all pretty, those pretty, those are all municipal light posts, aren't they?
Uh, is that Downingtown?
No, 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 I'm talking about our direction. There are some that are down towards right before you hit the Downingtown. Aren't they municipal lights?
That is a little section of Downingtown, if I recall.
Where Italian Village is, Cheryl?
Well, Italian Village is in Downingtown, right?
Uh, yes.
Short of that, isn't there a string of those kind of lights that goes that are callin'? No?
Just in front of Jamie's.
Downingtown? Oh, okay.
Lo- long term, of course, we are, there may be some options to expand on the decorative lights in various other sections of Lincoln Highway. And in that situation, they would be municipal owned.
All right. Well, the the original question is, what type of decoration are we interested in?
All of them. I like the pole wrap, the pole wrap with the lights, the whole pole wrap.
That's Chris.
Chris Pope, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue. I like the wreath.
The wreath.
I like the, if you would scroll it. I like the one on, I like the one on the, oh, the one in the middle has a little light, too.
Little lantern.
Well, no, that that actually circles around the.
Oh, the round.
South.
Either one. I like the wreaths.
And and that brings a good question. Where would the outlet be located and what type of wreath would actually work best?
To answer the first question, the outlet would be at the top of the decorative lighting unit.
Oh, really?
It would be towards the the top of that to connect.
Top of the lamp.
It reaches it, yeah, you don't have to close.
Um, would they'll be installing essentially, it would be um small box on the back section of the light that will be affixed to the pole. And will be accessing electric through the pole itself. It's a relatively small modification that will. Fit our needs and will not be a a costly improvement. It actually um falls within the scope of the total budget allocated for the decorative lights. So as we move towards closeout of that project, the the that improvement will be added on uh prior to finalizing the closeout.
I like the wreath under the lamp. I like the poinsettia and I like the pole wrap.
I like the pole wrap. So what do we do? Just let everybody take a vote and put it out on our, on our.
Well, this is discussion.
I mean, af- after we discuss it.
Candy canes for everyone.
Candy canes.
So I do understand.
They're not lit in Downingtown?
They're lit at Christmas.
I I thought they were. That's why. Okay.
Would this be on every light?
Well, that's what we need to determine, certain township lights, streetlights. You have Adams?
Yeah. Adam Thomas, uh three ten Carlin Fort. I have a question, um, who has control? Can you scroll down to the the one wreath? Oh, go up, I guess. Okay, the one on the far left has obviously an arm coming out. Is that an option that we could do so that not only for Christmas, but other holidays as well or other things that are coming? We could put a banner up or something?
I will say, the lights that that the township owns do not have permanently attached arms. We have purchased arms for the ones where we, on the banners. Um, it's just like a metal clamp thing. If you drive around town, though, in the, on the properties where they were required to put their own in, some of those do have the built in and some of them don't. So some of them, and the ones that do only have a top one, so we end up putting a clamp on the bottom. So there's probably, if you really look, there's ten different decorative lights throughout the town, and they all have sort of different configurations. But, yeah, I have a lot of brackets and hooks. I imagine these come with their own, for the most part. I would hope so.
But, well, I guess that's a good point, because if you're driving east.
So you're referring to the the one on the left up there? The sidewalk.
Yeah, Tony's question is, is it facing, if we only go with a certain type of wreath, would it only be facing east side or west side?
Are they double sided lighting? Do we have the double sided display?
I envision those um extending out, so they would be seen by both east and west vehicle traffic. I think that would make sense.
But are they double sided?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Are these artificial or real? Or is that just a dumb question? So they're artificial for long-term use?
Yes.
Uh, not to belabor the Malvern thing, but what they have is something that looks like a basket that goes on the top of the lamppost and a tree goes inside it. So that it it can be seen at any view, like the whole entire view. Um, and this way, everybody can see it from any angle, just FYI.
Good consideration.
Yep.
Okay.
Want something double sided.
Mm hmm. Well, the wraparound, is it?
He wrapped, does too. You're right.
But I like the wreath.
I actually like the, I like the snowflake. I like the snowflake with the the wreath of wrap around the pole.
The rising star pole mount?
That's pretty nice.
Oh, that one, that is nice.
And they could be left up longer because it's more about snow than it is.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that's really good thinking there.
Yes, that is.
Hmm. Good point.
Like it. I like it.
Uh, and I, as I see, there's different sizes. Is it possible to get a visual on, you know, what what size would look appropriate as you're driving down Lincoln Highway? Do we have any comparisons?
I'm sure we could mock one up and hold it up next to a light pole and see what happens.
We'll just take a tape measure and see how far it goes, no?
We can, we can put together some visual for purposes, yeah.
Uh, any comments from Zoom? You know, they don't have a microphone to pass around like these folks here, so.
Chief's had it.
Not in a Christmas spirit, Scrooge. You don't want to have Christmas.
All right. Well, we can, we can put together some of these options, get some design mockups for scale. And then get some cost comparisons and bring it back. We we, of course, we don't have to make a decision immediately, but it would be good. I don't know what the the time, lead time would be, so as you get closer, I I believe it was mentioned, really, we should have everything in place by early November. In order to make sure that we'll be able to have it up in time.
Right.
So it's clock, we're not against it, it's not a deadline, but we're, the clock is ticking.
All right. Now, as far as the electrical outlets, timeframe on that?
I've been informed that uh we, they should be able to get those installed by August at the latest September. Um, it, again, the cost. Um, it, again, the cost would be built into the total project. And so there should not be any additional expense with the installation of those units. Um, so I, we have a follow-up conversation with the contractor. I believe it's next week, we get something scheduled, so hopefully we'll, we'll have some timeline I can provide to the board and the public very soon. And it should only take a week or two to get everything, it's not a great deal number of lights, so should be able to do it very quickly.
Sounds good.
Could we add on? For one outlet to be put in front of Tony's house for a, for a peppermint stick.
For the peppermint stick.
Think you're just laying bad looking.
All the way down to Loomis.
Got one on the boundary.
All right, good discussion, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Long awaited.
By the end of this year, Christmas festivities will be seen and felt.
All right.
More to come.
All right.
I'm coming.
Four point four.
Uh, next, we have an item that was, uh, it's been brought forward to the, to the board's attention previously and one that we looked into in greater detail over the past several weeks. Uh, the county, I believe it was last year, implemented a volunteer firefighter tax credit. These are for, for volunteer firefighters and EMS that give their time, energy, expertise to protect the community. And, uh, the county has a program that municipalities can adopt that would allow if they meet a certain threshold and a number of, uh, response calls and training events, uh, that they would receive a discount or waiver of local tax payments. Uh, this would be a refund program, so they'd be, they would have to pay their tax upfront and would be eligible to refund uh, that payment, um, if they do cross that threshold of the minimum requirement of responses. Um, and speaking with the Thorne Dale Fire Company, it would be a nice program to just show how grateful the community is who are emergency responders, um, you know, at all hours of the day and night when they're called, they respond. And many are volunteer. So, uh, the program, uh, again, is put forward for, um, consideration and, uh, opening it up to discussion to see if this is something you'd like to move forward with.
All right, commissioners, comments on this?
I love it.
All said. Apparently, the county already has passed their resolution. That's a, that's a huge help right there in our little township expense. Every, every dollar counts, uh, and I do believe it would go a long way, possibly even getting more folks to volunteer.
Right, but a great incentive.
For the fire department.
If only we could get the school district to agree too.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially if we're gonna keep going to the intermediate units.
That's the least support.
All right. Uh, commissioner, is there any other, other comments on this?
I think we should implement it and hopefully it will generate some interest and motivate people to get involved. I think it's gonna be a great incentive.
All right, I'll ask residents here, anybody want to sign up? I mean, uh, anybody have questions? And it's, hey, it's a difficult job, but the folks that do it out there.
They're honored to save lives.
And this little act of kindness on our end, I believe would go a long way. No comments here from the township folks, uh, anyone in Zoom? All right, if you can, go ahead and put this together for us and then for next meeting.
Absolutely, I'll have it, uh, prepared, we'll run through and, uh, you know, see what the impact. Um, and have that prepared and ready for the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad you folks, but I've actually been approached by other firefighters from other townships, uh, who all already do this. Other municipalities do this on their level, not just the county, so. I think it's a definite benefit. All right, next on the agenda, complete streets. Please explain.
Okay, this is, this is also a Chester County resolution. Complete Streets is, it's a component of Vision Zero. It's a, a transportation incentive initiative vision, uh, just as far as redesigning the transportation structure to accommodate safety. Um, improve and incentivize pedestrian, alternative forms of transportation, pedestrian bikes and the like. Um, and doing so with an intentional mindset, looking towards, um, that safety and expanded options. Um, from sidewalks to enhanced, you know, the street lighting. Um, various safety features that would promote, uh, public safety and improvements. Um, the county did adopt the, the resolution, uh, encouraging municipalities to follow suit. Um, this is, is as a discussion item for the board, we can certainly modify or update the county resolution to meet our needs in Callan. Uh, I will just add from, um, uh, we are going after several grants. Uh, grant funds that would qualify as components associated with complete streets and Vision Zero. And this would be, it wouldn't, you know, it would be nice to be able to put in the grant, of course, that we have the resolution adopted. I don't think it would be the deciding factor, but it can't hurt.
Right.
Definitely. Commissioners, comments, questions on this?
And have we already identified areas in the township where we could benefit from this grant?
The, the program itself, um, I believe, uh, the chief of police and, uh, Lincoln Highway Commission have been discussing various transportation improvements and ways to, um, encourage safety, pedestrian mobility, especially with some of the new businesses and developments along Lincoln Highway. We, we are expecting to see an increase in pedestrian movement in that area.
If you look in, and this is something that Lincoln Highway Commission have, have realized. If you look in your board packet, page forty-eight, it's page five of the complete street thing. The, uh, picture on the bottom left circle. Can you identify the township that that picture was taken?
You talking about the sidewalk ends?
Yeah.
Can't be by Jack's or Joey's. Where is it?
Oh, I think Callan.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Oh.
We made it to a.
We made it to the.
It used to probably.
Yeah, that. You know, the chief is, you know, actually did a study on Vision Zero and where our really bad spots are for accidents. One is, is near the high school and one is right at Wedgewood. A lot of it's poor lighting, I, I know a lot of the Arley Grant, uh, pitch was on trying to get these sort of improvements. The, uh, complete streets prioritizes getting bicycle lanes, I think, I don't know if you all saw that video from the drone footage with the bicycle, it's almost getting hit by a traffic car on Lincoln Highway. And it talks in here about, uh, it asks if, you know, are you in compliance with your comprehensive plan? Now, our comprehensive plan is very outdated and very flawed, but you know, there are some good things in it and now what, it was written in twenty seventeen, so it's referring to landscapes two, we're on landscapes three now. But there's language on page forty-four of it regarding complete streets concepts, Vision Zero, complete streets. I've made great strides since then. What was the, what did Lancaster just get for their Vision Zero project?
Twelve and a half million.
Wow.
So, so, these are not things that, you know, these are just not wild ideas. These are things that if, if we start taking the right steps, the money's there. And people would love to get it for us. Or it can go to some other township that doesn't need it.
We talked about this at Lincoln Highway and it, it's a way also to really kind of set the tone of the downtown and beautify the, the area because a lot of its traffic calming devices, it's sidewalks, it's lights, it's, um, bike lanes. It, it, if you drive down Lincoln Highway in the dark, it's amazing how many people have to either, uh, walk across the street to the bus station or walk or bike home. Um, and, you know, we want to do everything we can to make sure that they get home safely. So, uh, at Lincoln Highway Committee, we talked about this and, uh, recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt the complete streets.
And he is eloquent.
Good job, George. Residents here in the township building, any comments? Tony, come on up. A little closer to the mic, you might have to turn that mic around.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I heard nothing of what Tony said.
Is, is that, is it off? Thank you, Josh.
The handicrafters right there at, at the barley sheaf in the boulevard. You know, it's dark down there, a lot of them kids walk up there, Josh. It's dark, especially when they turn, when you turn the clock back, you know, it, it changes. And I, I mentioned it before, but you know, it is, it's very bad, you know, and, you know, them kids are not responsible anyway for themselves. So I just, you know, just want to be careful for the kids.
Good point, Tom. Thank you.
Give that man a lick candy cane.
No other comments here in the township building? On Zoom? Done. Well, you got some more homework to do for, uh, next meeting?
All right, uh, well, make sure that's updated and it'll be on the agenda potentially for the next meeting for consideration.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Four point six.
Okay, thank you, uh, four point six. Uh, this, this was brought to my, my attention as a request to look into what type of, uh, uh, municipal ordinance could be crafted regarding medical marijuana in the township. These are the, the medical marijuana, uh, retail stores. Um, part of the discussion was the, the recent, um, conversation at the state level uh, for recreational marijuana, uh, legalizing either at the federal level or state level. Uh, states around Pennsylvania have done so. Uh, it's unclear if Pennsylvania would move in that direction, uh, how that would look, what that would look like. But, uh, one of the discussion points that have been raised is transitioning the medical marijuana to, uh, recreational. Uh, the current ordinance in the township is, is not, uh, not very strict when it comes to where these specific retail shops can go. Um, other municipalities have enacted stricter ordinance to, uh, regulate, especially when it comes to locations adjacent or, or nearby schools, daycare centers, other types of facilities. Uh, the ordinance in the township does, does not, uh, does not have that provision included with it. Um, if the board would, would be so inclined, we can certainly take a look at what other municipalities have done. There's a sample provided in the packet of a fairly restrictive, um, policy and ordinance that, that, uh, would not just limit medical marijuana, would also, uh, provide some provisions on vape shops. And then unregulated cannabis substances that, uh, those so synthetic, um, unregulated items. It's, again, it's, it's another, we have received some inquiries, um, from uh, national retail organizations asking what the ordinances and regulations from zoning and things of that sort are in the township. Um, it was unclear why they were asking other than they, it made it sound as if they would be putting together uh, a list of, um, municipalities with lax regulations associated with uh, this type of use and then potentially going out to solicit, uh, local organizations to, to, to open shop. So, uh, this is a, a further discussion and consideration, happy to answer any questions that, that the board may have. And obviously, as if, if there's interest in moving forward with a, a more stringent regulation regarding these types of, uh, facilities, I would want to, um, involve the director Stackhouse uh, in, in that conversation from this, from the get-go.
Commissioners, comments?
That's great. As if you're not, they're opening up like candy stores around here, they're popping up everywhere.
Yeah, I think I reported back from the county Department of Alcohol and Drug Services. They actually put out a mission, uh, a, an opinion statement on this that, okay, I got it. Whatever people do is their business, you know, I, I have friends who have medical marijuana cards and it helps them in whatever way, but the, the sense is that once it goes legal for sale, you know, in the state, that vape shops are gonna flip.
They're flopping now.
Like that, to selling marijuana. And, you know, medical marijuana shops will flip like that. And the concern is, I mean, it's.
How many?
We gotta focus here on Lincoln Highway and trying to make this a great township? And how many places could automatically become?
Dispensaries, yeah.
And, and you know, we got schools there, uh, I mean, you got a, you got a vape shops, probably, it might be selling cannaboid. I have, I keep thinking, I want to go in and see if they can sell me some great time so I can find out if they really have it. Right over there by the high school. And that's killing people in New Jersey. Uh, the great time, uh, so.
Some type of ordinance.
I think that the, what came out of the county was municipalities need to get out ahead of this fast. Because this is something that could happen. Let's get a little control over where it goes, cause.
Yep. So many in such a radius space, that's enough.
Josh, any comments?
Yeah, we talked about this at Lincoln Highway and we feel that we have a sufficient number of vape shops and medical marijuana dispensaries that we need to put in a little more teeth in our ordinance to, you know, stop that. And, you know, I understand they fill storefronts, but at what point do we need, you know, a thirtieth vape shop, uh, on Lincoln Highway?
Yeah, are we allowed to limit the type of shops?
No.
That, that of course would be a, a better question for our solicitor. Um, however, I believe we can certainly put in some additional regulations associated with that use that would allow, um, the, the code enforcement and, uh, the police department to, to uh, better serve the community if that's the direction that the board would like.
And we talked about that a little bit, I'm sorry, Jane.
That's okay, I was just wondering, how are they monitored, the ones that we have today?
That would be a good question.
As we look at the chief.
They're regulated by the Department of Health, uh.
Just the medical marijuana, right, not vape shops?
Right.
Not vape shops.
Right.
They sell anything now.
I mean, they're highly regulated, we had an issue, if you remember, months ago, where there was a conjoining business that they thought they smelled marijuana, um, and we actually toured the dispensary. Um, and the security was very high and we, we determined that the odor was not coming from the dispensary. The, the distance though is a thousand feet between a dispensary and the property lines of a school or daycare, so.
How many miles is uh Lincoln Highway from end to end?
Seven? No. Oh, no, no.
Maybe three?
Three and a half.
So we could, we could make it three miles from any school or daycare.
You wouldn't be able to come in.
I'm I'm reaching here, but
Stretch that like this one last.
Uh Tony's asking, what does Coatsville or Downingtown do? That's a good question and we can find that out.
We we a component of putting together an ordinance would be looking at neighboring communities and pulling uh examples of what their ordinances and regulations may be for board, the board to consider. Uh so we we would, i- if directed, we would certainly look into that.
We also talked about it at Lincoln Highway too. This might be an ordinance that, you know, may not have been tested in the courts yet, but we thought that it was worth uh putting in there to try to limit some of these vape shops and it might be worth the fight, you know, to pass a stricter ordinance and let the court strike it down should it should it so desire.
It's um again, there's there's one of the concerns is that the the vape shops that are sitting there as vape shops are just waiting for the opportunity to flip into being marijuana retailers.
Or both.
Uh, and I I know I told this story in Lincoln Highway and if I said it here before, I ap- I apologize, but a couple of months ago, uh every now and then, uh we like to go out to a nice dinner and you know, we went to Taco Mar to get some takeout in Downingtown. And you know, you you pull in and you make your order and then you sit there and you wait and then you get it, you come home. So we're s- get there to make our order. And these two kids, it was a a male and a female on a bicycle. He looked older than her. She definitely looked like a kid. You know, they're going by while we're waiting for our order. And we get our order, we pull out, get on the block down there where that uh vape shop is. There's the girl standing outside with the bicycle and the guy's coming out and handing her the stuff. Now, that's what happens when you don't have strong regulations. And that's what could happen with, you know, a pot retailer and stuffs.
But they're gonna find a way around all that.
I I just, yeah, I think we
Here all day and night.
We need to do it.
Oh, yes, true.
Hold on. We got you. We got you.
You're getting some help.
We'll come over and do your dishes later, too.
And that's been recorded, so.
One is a comment. Um, I had a medical marijuana card at one point two years ago because for arthritis, my doctor wanted to try it. By the way, it didn't work oh well, but um I learned a couple of things about it. And at the time I was going to the one in Melbourne.
Mm hmm.
Um, that is a hundred percent cash. You cannot use a credit card, you cannot use uh a check. It's a hundred percent cash because it's federally not permitted. And so the state, so they can't get uh credit card companies won't underwrite it or do anything. So you have to use cash. There's a, one of the reasons I think to to the uh police chief's position. One of the reasons it's so well guarded. They have double plate glass on that one. I mean, it's amazingly well guarded because there is a lot money. One ounce of something is like eighty bucks and that's all cash. But the other part of it was, I agree with you, you're gonna have to put, you're gonna have to fight the vape shops. You know how I feel about the smoking thing because of Jim, but um they'll come in. But I have a question, which I is a legal question I I would like to know, and I maybe our solicitor could tell me. I'm not sure even if they pass that the state of Pennsylvania can do it. I'm not, how does that, how's that negate the federal law which says it's not allowed? Like, right now, they can't do, they can't take cash. Are they gonna have to rely on, uh can't take credit? Are they gonna rely on cash to? I don't know. That's how it is now.
Now, how they gonna figure out their taxation? It'd be hurting them.
Good question.
But I'm with Josh. I mean, go ahead and test it now. I mean,
Yeah.
We don't need to be, you know, the bottom of the barrel place where people pump all these joints.
Mm hmm.
You look at all the
Thank you, Cheryl.
All the locations along Lincoln Highway right now that are are vacant commercial that could just become anything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Adam Thomas, Planning Commission, three ten Carlin Court. Is there any way we could talk to Ray and Kristen, the solicitor, and figure out if there's a way that we could amp up our nuisance regs and ordinances so that we take it from something that's fairly, you know, minor like soliciting, or not soliciting, but loitering and move that, or if there's any sort of complaint that suddenly puts their business license at risk or anything else so that we can come at it from ordinance uh and rich and legislation as well versus what we're proposing here, just so we have a multifaceted approach.
Think that is a wonderful possibility. We could certainly look into that and explore um and work with Director Stackhouse and that Solicitor Camp to determine what, just like any, any complex situation, there's gonna be a multifaceted approach to to hopefully find a resolution.
Any other comments? You just wanted to hold the mic? Yes, Chief.
Just one thing I'd like to add about the dispensaries and vape shops. If you remember a few years ago, we had spas, three of them in the township, all of them within about a mile of each other. And after years of complaints and investigations, um we successfully put all three of them out of business because they were really prostitution houses and uh human trafficking houses. But because there was such a concentration of them in such a small area, when we were serving a search warrant at one of them, we actually had people coming from hours away because they had their choice of three in a very small location. And that's kind of what happens. Um you you can't have enough of them if there's a customer base. And I think eventually the same would start to apply, not so much maybe for dispensaries, but certainly for vape shops.
Yep.
Mm hmm. Point.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh Lorraine, any comments?
None at this time.
All right, thanks, Lorraine. Any more from uh Zoom? Good debate, good discussion.
If if the board would uh would allow, I'm happy to put together some options to look at the neighboring municipalities to see what what they have in place and uh work with uh Director Stackhouse, uh Chief of Police, and of course loop in our solicitor to to brainstorm the best possible uh comprehensive solutions to the to address that this issue.
Yep. Can I ask a question? They they're just opening a new one down there near the Habitat Store and that shopping counter, I don't know the name of that little shopping area. So are we giving them permits to do that? Because they're they're just opening this week or something.
What, is this a a
Vape shop.
Vape shop.
You know, right there in the um that little shopping center where uh Habitat is.
Other one just moved in where the Avis was?
So can we just stop right now? Like, who who, how are we giving them permits to go in? Because they're just popping up everywhere.
If they, if they, if a property owner, if a business owns the property or leases the property and it's allowed by right within the district, then they're meeting all the regulations that are on the books currently, um including nuisance and and others that we we would, it would be very difficult, not impossible to deny them the right to do something that our current regulations allows them to do.
When change, getting this regulation tightened up fast.
Commissioner Evans brings up an excellent point. I mean, if all the vape shops are gearing up and they're ready to flip, it's gonna put us in a terrible bind.
Hurry up.
Yeah.
Act quicker.
Then later.
Get moving.
Get Ray on the phone right now.
Ray.
All right.
You're listening.
The next uh four point seven. These special events.
Last but not least, and of course, uh Chief, if uh there's that, there's anything I leave out, please feel free to uh jump in. This is uh regarding uh special events that our police department are asked to cover. Uh this could be for a number of reasons. The school district has an event, uh another third party requires uh police coverage for safety. Uh we do have a a current rate. This wouldn't be funded out of the the township as it stands. Uh they established a contract. Um, and that that rate would be paid. My understanding is it has not changed for a number of years. That rate has been sent, set for a while. Um and uh the may not match exactly what the hourly rate uh for all the officers uh would be. And also, my my understanding is that it does not take into account some other provisions, holiday pay, overtime and the like. It's just a flat rate. So uh the chief has reached out to see if the board would be willing to consider um in improving this policy so that any extra cost would not be uh come out of any township funds. They would be built into the contract with the third party organizations. Chief of line.
Yeah, I mean, it's been years, you know, we uh you know, in addition to the officer salary, uh there's also healthcare, life insurance pension, all of those things that go into the cost. Um, it's not a moneymaker. All we want to do is be able, you know, to honor these requests when we receive them and and break even. Um, until this year, we never had a request on a holiday and we got a request from Downingtown to assist with two events. Um, and overtime on a holiday is the equivalent of triple pay. So uh eighty-five dollars an hour per officer. We would eat about eighty-five dollars an hour. Um so again, all all we want to do is is break even. These special duty requests are different than extra duty requests. Um extra duty requests would involve a company having an MOU with the police department uh for us to supply officers where the officers would be paid, not through the township, but by the uh the requister. We've never had that in the eleven years that I've been here. All of our special duty requests are um assigned to officers and the entity pays the department and then the officer receives um overtime as they would if they worked any other overtime. So we have an MOU with the school district. Um, and that's ninety-five percent of our special duty requests. And the MOU with the school district specifically says they will honor whatever overtime reimbursement that the board approves.
Basically, at this point, we lose. We're taking a loss.
Mm hmm.
Because our our hourly rate is just not up to
And I mean, it's not a huge, I think it's eighty-five, it's gonna go to a hundred. Um it's the uh overtime on holidays.
Mm hmm.
That's about ninety dollars. And again, it's it's just to break even.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I I believe that we should just break even. This isn't, we're not out for a profit, but we are uh to offer our services.
It doesn't cost us.
Yeah. So Commissioners, any comments on that?
Do we have to draft something for your department to use? For outside, will we have to draft? No, you don't.
It's it's part of the, it'll it'll be part of the fee schedule.
Oh, okay.
Josh, any comments?
No.
All right, Lorraine, any comments?
No.
Reach out to the residents here, township. We're all for it. They're all jumping up and down here. Have a good one soon. Sounds good. Yeah, why don't we update our fee schedule for this?
Do it.
We will move that forward right away.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. That's all I have uh for this evening.
Are you sure? You sure you don't have? We're having fun.
Hi, uh check approval. We have a check run, five two thousand one hundred fifty-four. The fifty-two thousand two hundred thirty-three. Any questions? Comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve the check run.
We moved.
So moved?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Yes, what is the question?
Uh, check number five two one five nine to the city of Philadelphia.
Eighteen dollars?
For eighteen dollars. So um when we have an employee that lives uh in a particular city, town, et cetera, uh we're required to register uh all of our information with their specific resident uh town. And we were not registered unbeknownst to us with the city of Philadelphia. So it's a one-time eighteen dollar fee to register.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, uh we have a motion and second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And check run has been approved, five zero. Board liaisons, we'll start with parking wreck.
All right, Abby, two years of your team, hats off, gloves off, boots off, everything's off. These guys, you know, they work diligently to clean the streams and keep everything beautiful around the township. And as you can see, even in the newsletter, they they had tons of people just from a stream and embankment area, old tires and trash that must have been buried and landed for many, many years. So the extended, you know, efforts that you guys put into go beyond cleanup day to just make this ongoing uh project to clean the streams, keep the township, the highways, the byways, places we don't even see, they go in. So hats off to her and her team. You do a great job. And they're always looking for volunteers. So, you know, visit the website so you can see when the next cleanup event will take place in your backyard. Because they'll be there. See somebody coming through, it'd be Abby and her team. Um, also, we had a discussion about art in the park. And that's on the website as well, and that's going great. Um, the children made excellent seed packets last, at the last event. And I was astonished to see my seed packet that might be on exhibit at the Coastal Library. So they're really doing great things and a lot of the art that the children do, families are participating, you know, will be on exhibit. And hopefully on Community Day as well, as I understand. So, you know, come on out. We have a few weeks left. And hopefully even thinking about bringing them indoors when we do some of our holiday events, because they're doing such an excellent job. I think it's catching on and everybody seems to enjoy. The kids will afford, big kids and little kids. Um, I think what we're talking about also again is the grant for the master plan. We're still working on that. Hopefully, for municipal park to write a grant to do a master plan to make the park a better designed park and more inclusive for children with disabilities. So that's still something that we're pursuing diligently. We need to look at all of our parks, but you know, uh I think that one is just the engineering piece for municipal park to start. Or we may include other areas. We'll just see. But that is something that we are pursuing, you know. It's a big project, but it will happen. Um, we're gonna have our first movie night uh next week, June twenty-first. And we're gonna be showing Ninja Teenage Mutant Turtles. And that event is gonna bring the kids out with their Ninja Turtle costumes and probably some fake swords. We'll probably need some protection out there, Chief. These kids are coming at us with all kinds of swords and weapons and then Ninja Turtle outfits. And we're gonna have free pizza, courtesy of Callum Pizza Plaza, some demonstrations from our karate uh and martial arts uh businesses in the areas. In case of rain, it'll be at the pavilion at the golf course. So that's a nice backup plan. We we hadn't done that over the last couple of years. Um, I don't know if I'm missing anything. Abby, you could tell me. We are getting ready for Community Day. That's gonna be coming up real soon. And we're already starting to solicit and get sponsors and ads for that for September seventh. So we're working on it as well. And while I'm, while I have the mic, just want to remind our audience that uh to support the St. Joseph Community Festival. It's gonna be very nice uh from June eighteenth to the twentieth, from six to ten P M. And they'll also be having fireworks on the twenty-first. So make sure everybody comes out. We'll be watching Ninja Turtles and fireworks at the same time.
Will, will Donatello be working that that night?
All those guys will be out there.
Jello.
I don't know if I'm ready for that one, but
Does anybody know who they are?
The Ninja Turtles. The Ninja Turtles. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Chief, yes, I do write my own jokes.
We know.
It's getting late.
It is. All right. Cog?
Cog, uh, they actually canceled the meeting list.
Municipal Authority. On a good note, uh, Cal Meeting House, Granger Lane Sewer Extension Project is currently in the design phase and once completed, a preliminary cost estimate will be established. Yeah, her ears are peek, uh, perking up there. Uh, work on the twenty twenty-four grouting project began on June sixth. Project consists of cleaning, televising and grouting approximately forty-two hundred, uh, linear feet of the eight inch diameter gravity sewer in the Colonial Gardens neighborhood. Tony's neighborhood. And mine. And, uh, C, uh, CTMA also signed the sanitary sewer easement agreement for the Kia Auto Leasing Project, which will establish a twenty inch wide sanitary sewer easement encompassing the existing eight inch sewer main. Offer for dedication of the existing eight inch line and the manholes will come later. Once all the necessary repairs are made to the satisfaction of our authority engineer. And with Nudera, uh, no new update since, uh, since last month. As far as the fire board, we are meeting, I, I believe it's July third, which is that Monday, first Monday. So no update on the fire board. Next will be historical mission.
Hey, yeah, thanks. Um, but Historical Commission met on Wednesday, May fifteenth with the quorum, eight of our 10 members present along with four guests, including, uh, Dr. Laura Feller, the president of the nonprofit Friends of Spackman Davis Farm. We were really focused on the big event on June twenty-ninth at Spackman Davis Farm. Uh, last year we had partnered with Planning Committee, uh, Parks and Rec, and we're hoping to get some, some love for them, them again on this, this year where the, uh, Historical Commission and the Friends of Spackman Davis Farm are, I mean, have the longest picnic table in Chester County. We will have, uh, Marion Moskowitz, Michelle Kickline and, uh, Danielle Frillotten and Katie Muth, uh, reading the Declaration of Independence. Uh, we're hoping to have Dan Williams come and say grace over the meal. There's a, uh, the bluegrass band, uh, food available from Dixie Picnic in Malvern. It's just, it's gonna be a huge event. But we need to get like a hundred and fifty people there to make it work. So, um, the friends do have a website, F O S D F dot org. You can register there for free. You can also preorder your lunch there. So we had a great meeting. Uh, everyone worked very collegially. We went through a lot of stuff. Really got on the right same page with everyone. Uh, let's say we've been really lucky to work with the chief and with, uh, Mr. Huggins and Ray and, and Abby and Don on making sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed. Now, since our last meeting, the Historical Commission had a major breakthrough. We received word last week that Kathy Callahan had been notified, her amazing Mendenhall Valentine House has finally been granted a designation of eligibility for the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office. She fought for years to have her house recognized for its importance to count to the county, to the state and to the nation. And she never gave up. Um, getting that DOE is a huge step, uh, towards her, uh, the, it being enlisted under the National Register of Historic Places. And another feather in the cap for county township. So congrats to Kathy for her heroic efforts. That's the good news. Uh, our second monthly schoolhouse tour of twenty twenty-four on June second drew twenty-two visitors. Twenty-two. Yes. People want to be in the room where it happened. And will travel on a beautiful Sunday to do so. Uh, Schoolhouse and Old Town Friends Meeting House tours are the first Sunday of each month through October. Our June meeting will be next Wednesday, the nineteenth at seven P M. You can join us right here live or from home via Zoom. We're a group of doers who have a ton of fun getting things done and never met a roadblock that could slow us down. We'd love to have a few more doers join our team.
Thank you, Mark. Next, uh, Lincoln Highway.
So we met at the beginning of the month. Um, we discussed the, uh, Vision Zero and, uh, Complete Streets. Um, we spent a good amount of time looking through that and make sure the, uh, resolution the county had was something we wanted to recommend to the board. Um, we also focused a little bit on the Arlie Grant, um, and trying to apply for that and see where we go with that. And one of the other discussions was bringing in commercial developers, uh, to talk to the Lincoln Highway Committee to say, what is it that we're not doing that you need for to revitalize some of these properties? Is it zoning? Is it, you know, uh, time? Is it because it's not by right? So we're, we're gonna try to focus on inviting some developers that, uh, would redevelop commercial properties and figure out what it is that we're not doing that they need us to do in order to make, uh, Lincoln Highway, uh, grow more. So that's what we discussed.
That is an excellent idea. Excellent.
I just wanted to add, this is, this is not your grandf, grandma's Lincoln Highway Commission. These, these are, these people are nuts about getting things done. It's just do, 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 do. So I'm, I'm honored to be a part of it.
Thank you, Josh. Ingleside Golf Course.
Hi, Ingleside Golf Course. We canceled the meeting last month due to the holiday. We also have another meeting coming up June twenty-fourth at the golf course. See you there.
All right. Thanks, Lorraine. And we added in here a zoning task force, but I was gonna ask Don just to give a highlight for the folks that weren't able to attend.
Of course. Um, very productive zoning task force meeting. Um, focused on the, the remaining parcels, uh, on the zoning map, uh, that, uh, to, uh, determine what the best possible future use for those properties would be for the vision of the, of the township. Uh, also had a presentation regarding a, uh, mixed use development up in, uh, uh, the Weatherstone, I believe it's referred to. It's a, a Hankin property. And, uh, looking at the ordinances that facilitated that development to move forward. Um, the next meeting will take place, uh, next Thursday. And, uh, looking forward to continuing that, uh, ongoing efforts going very smoothly.
Thank you, Don. All right, moving on to additional business. Additional business this time. Hands raised. A public comment, buddy here in the township building. Do not see any hands raised, but they're all jumping up and down. They're excited. Not sure if it's because they're, what's that? Oh, absolutely.
I just want to again, you know, thank the board of commissioners and our township manager and everybody that participated, Abby, Michelle, a few other people came from the township. Today we were able to unveil the first historical road sign marker for one of our, uh, now deceased uh, pillars in our community and Carver's Court, uh, for Bishop Aggleston. And I mean, the turnout was spectacular. You know, for eleven o'clock on a Thursday and you can get that many people to gather together to, um, show their loyalty towards, uh, their father, you know, to a community leader and to someone that inspired a lot of people, you know, to live a quality of life that, you know, still kind of resonates in the community today. Uh, it was spectacular. Thank you again.
Great, uh, public comment in Zoom. None at this time? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Move second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Waiting adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you.